I will call this meeting to order.
Sheriff Harvey?
Here.
Eric Haron?
Here.
Lisa Romano?
Here.
Colleen Ederman?
Here.
And John Mastin?
Here.
Please join me in a moment of silent prayer or personal private reflection. Amen. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have student achievement. Arizona 529 essay contest winner with Dr. Festi Dagel.
So we're really sad because Carson isn't here, but his amazing teacher, Mrs. Charette, is here. And so Carson won at the state level for the Arizona 529 Plan. The Treasurer's Office held this competition for students to write about their goals for the chance to win $529 in a 529. So the Arizona State Treasurer's Office and the Arizona 529 Advisory Committee invited fifth and sixth graders across Arizona to share their dream jobs and how they plan to achieve it by writing a three paragraph essay. Twenty winners from across the state were selected from hundreds of essays. The winners received $529 towards a 529 educational savings plan. The amount was to pay homage to Section 529 of the Internal Revenue Code, which creates 529 plans that can be used for post-secondary education. Carson Blair is a sixth grader at Starline Elementary, and he was one of the 20 winners, and he wrote his essay about becoming an Olympic swimmer. And so to talk a little bit about Carson and his Olympic swimming is his teacher, Mrs. Charette. So Carson is not here like Dr. Festi said, but he speaks about his swimming dreams and goals. Like every day he checks in with me. He's probably at swim class right now or swim practice. So in his paragraph, he wrote, he has very clear, three clear distinct ways of how he will become an Olympic swimmer. First, he is going to go to Far Western, which is a swim competition, then he will make it to Nationals, and then Olympic Trials. He has very clear and determined like time for himself of how he will get here, and that was also recognized when he won the scholarship, is that he is very determined and he has a very specific path on reaching these goals and dreams for himself.
Good job, teacher.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Mr. Moss for... Let me try this. Student Services, I Can Do It Awards with Mr. Moss.
Thank you. In partnership with the Arizona Council for Exceptional Children, Lake Havasu Unified School District wishes to recognize students within our district who have demonstrated an I Can Do It attitude. Despite any challenges, students are recognized for excelling in academics, arts, athletics, community service, employment, self-advocacy, technology, or other independent life skills through a nomination process at their school site. The award recognition acknowledges the determination of a student to succeed and many times the family support that goes along with that. So parents and family in the room, thank you as well for all you do to support these outstanding students. Students that are awarded the local I Can Do It Award are nominated for the AZCEC Award. Last year, we did have a student from our district win the state award. We're very excited to see what happens this year. So students, as I call your school, if you'd like to come up, I have a few words to share that your school shared with me in your nomination, and we'd like to recognize you and your families. So we'll start with Lake Havasu High School with Bridget McCabe. Lake Havasu High School is pleased to recommend Bridget McCabe for the I Can Do It Award. She is an exceptional student who has demonstrated remarkable resilience and dedication throughout her academic career, maintaining an impressive unweighted GPA of 3.935 and a weighted GPA of 4.516. Bridget is driven, talented, compassionate, and an individual who undoubtedly makes significant contributions to any community. We wholeheartedly endorse her and are confident that she will excel in her future endeavors. Congratulations. From Thunderbolt Middle School, Anna Milligan. And although she's not here, I'd still like to tell you about her excellence. Anna is a hardworking individual, as she is extremely positive and kind. Her can-do attitude makes her complete all assignments and make any necessary corrections willingly. She works extremely hard and does her best in every subject, every day. She participates in choir, is a member of National Junior Honor Society, Student Council, and theater. She helps her classmates and is the go-to when someone needs help and is an excellent speller. She contributes great information to classroom discussions and makes Thunderbolt an amazing place to be. Thank you, Anna and Thunderbolt. From Nautilus Elementary School, we have a young man that I know very well, Mr. Alex Ariano. It is with, it is with great pride that the staff at Nautilus Elementary School nominate Alex Ariano for this award, recognizing his incredible perseverance and newfound love for reading. Alex struggled with school for several years, often feeling defeated and exhibiting a negative attitude. However, he's worked very hard to transform that and has been nothing short of remarkable. Now, each day, Alex proudly proclaims his ability to read and is eager to engage with reading materials. Most mornings, you can find him in front of the school, reading a book even before the day begins. His enthusiasm for learning has blossomed, and now in the fifth grade, his attitude towards school has taken a complete turn. He shows incredible resilience in the face of many challenges. Nautilus celebrates Alex daily for his perseverance, positive outlook, and determination, and we're very proud of him. Congratulations. From Havasu High Elementary School, Ziven Bliski. Ziven is a sixth grade student at Havasu High Elementary School. Ziven says that when he grows up, he wants to work in the pool business like his dad, so when he retires, he'd be the boss. Ziven shared with staff at the school that he was so happy because he couldn't wait to go home after school to tell his mom that he got 100% on a math test and a blue ticket for Mr. Nigg. Ziven is incredibly proud of the work he does to earn blue tickets and for the responsible things he does. He likes to work hard and is happy when he can do his work all by himself, and a perfect day for him would be when he turns in all his work, remembers to turn in the work he completed, and helps others. We're incredibly proud of him. Congratulations. From Starline Elementary School, Talia Shamos. Talia has been a Starline starblazer since she entered her kindergarten year. She is supported by her incredible family and her fourth grade brother, who's in our tag program at the school. Talia... Harvey. Excellent. Talia is more than just bright, a bright smile, and an ever-present personality and a big heart. She's also a fierce self-advocate for her own self and her learning. She's excelled in kindergarten, first grade, and now is excelling in second grade. She spends the majority of her time in the general education setting with her peers, and she's made considerable progress as a reader with intervention groups and is on target with her peers in terms of growth. Starline is so proud of her, and we can't wait to see what excellent things she does. From Jamaica Elementary, we have Haley Wagner. Haley Wagner has a motivation to learn and is willing to put in the effort to make growth in her academics. She doesn't give up when a task is difficult, and her perseverance and dedication to her work and learning is seen in class every single day. Haley is quiet and reserved, but her focus and determination are key to progress. Her family is just and is invested in her learning as she is. On top of all that, Haley is kind and caring. She helps others, is polite, and is always willing to be kind to others around her. We're incredibly proud of you. Congratulations. From Smoke Tree Elementary School, Claire Wei. Claire's commitment to her education is evident through her consistent attendance, high levels of independent engagement, and participation in before and after-school sessions, where she works diligently to catch up on assignments and seek clarification on challenging concepts. Her perseverance stands out. We do want to make sure we mention the dedication and commitment of her mother, who has shown the benefits of working with all of her children and making sure they're reading at home. Her family has helped Claire be successful by doing positive affirmations, establishing a schedule, and following her checklist with support. When asked, Claire, what helps her be amazing and what has contributed to her success, she had so many insightful things to say. One thing that stood out to the staff is that you don't have to be small, you just need to be kind, try hard. It's okay to not know, but you still have to try. Congratulations. And from Oro Grande Classical Academy, Xavier Buckhardt. Xavier has completed many tasks in fourth grade with an I Can Do It attitude. Xavier starts his day off by reviewing what he can complete and how he will complete his tasks. It was Xavier's idea to add homework onto his plan with some support from staff, but he took that initiative. Since adding this task onto his plan, he's completed homework every single week with maybe a few incomplete days, but he works very, very hard. When he puts his mind to it, Xavier can do anything. He was a student who used to refuse to write and now is writing and drawing up comics, as well as working on a novel. He truly has the I Can Do It spirit, and it is a fantastic thing to see. With this new attitude, he's going to go far in life and do great things. Congratulations. Thank you again, not only to the students for being here, but to the staff who support them every single day and the families who are there day and night for these kids. We appreciate all you do. And families, with that, I do want to let you know you do not have to stay for the meeting, so if you'd like to head on out, that is absolutely okay. Thank you for being here so we can recognize these students and for all you do. Thank you.
All right, wonderful students. We don't have any calls to the public, so we'll move on to the, all right, Lake Havasu City Education Association, Carol Noakowskis.
Bring my own cheering squad. All right. President Harvey, members of the board, Dr. Stone, directors, good evening. This time next month, our legislators will be back at the Capitol with multiple bills to review. As they drop, I will look for the ones that will specifically impact LHUSD and keep you up to date on their progress. As this is our final board meeting of the year, LHCA would like an opportunity to recognize our outgoing board members. Board Member Mastin, eight years with many success stories. Before your onset as a board member, you partnered with LHCA Havasu Teacher Business Alliance to get donated laptops for our students. Those laptops allowed students to become journalists by writing and submitting stories to our local publications. You helped the district through the concerns of insurance, salary freezes, and curriculum. We have appreciated your due diligence through the years on every aspect of the district which moved us forward to where we are today. Thank you for all of your time, effort, and service for LHUSD. Board Members Aron and Ederman, four years, but wow. Those four years were jam-packed with health regulations, salary schedules, and continued commitment to curriculum and technology. We have appreciated your ongoing efforts to be on our campuses, supporting our students and staff in the areas of science fairs, school fairs, promotions, STEM, robotics, and math competitions. LHCA sincerely thanks you for your commitment and service to the community, staff, and students of Lake Havasu and Lake Havasu Unified School District. And then since it's the holidays, we do have some gifts to give the five of you.
Mine's the one with coal.
Yours was the hardest to get. But I did it.
Thank you.
And as that, finally, I would like to just wish happy holidays to each one of you, our community, our staff, our board, our directors, and that's it for 2024.
And thank you, Carol. All right, moving on, consent agenda, 4.1. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as stated? Is there a second?
A second.
Sheriff Harvey?
Yes.
Eric Haron?
Yes.
Lisa Romano?
Yes.
Colleen Ederman?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Action items, 6.1 Superintendent, one-time compensation, Dr. Stone.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. The district continues to strive toward better overall staff compensation. These are constant conversations with all of you, and there are times when we talk about one-time compensation, times when we try really hard to look at the entire salary schedule and what can we do to add to that base salary. At this time of the year, what we're talking about, we look to provide a COLA as funding allows. So in consideration of the expiration of the override and the district's carryforward funds, we are proposing a one-time 9% COLA for all staff. The purpose of the 9% COLA is this. So when you looked at the inflation rate, we're about 4% behind when we were offering COLAs over time. So that brings us kind of to even, and then the 5% added on is for what would happen this year. So staff, all staff would receive a 9% COLA. In addition, as was done at the beginning of the override, we provided a longevity retention stipend, and it was based on your years of service. So we are again proposing that at the end of the override. So you can see there, from one to four years is 12%, five to nine years is 14%, 10 to 14 years is 16%, 15 to 19 years is 18%, and 20-plus years is 20%. In talking through that, you're working with groups who have stayed with the district through lots of changes, lots of differences in salary at different times, so it is honoring that commitment to work with our students. So this proposed COLA and longevity retention stipend together will cost approximately $6.3 million. I will say that it would be paid out, because I know that's going to be everyone's question if this is to be approved by the board. So we would pay out the COLA as soon as possible here in December, and to give the staff a little more time to get all those longevity things in place, that would happen January 3rd. So this item has been reviewed by legal and discussed many times with Mayor HR and our business department and several of you, so that is up for your consideration this evening.
I move to accept 6.1.
I'll second that.
I just want to thank Mike once again for his, you know, his fiduciary management, going through these, through these processes. The way you've managed the budget has made these, these opportunities possible, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate, you know, with the longevity bonuses, somebody, some folks kind of wonder, you know, why it's weighted the way it is. The folks at the end of it, they went through some years when there were salary freezes and very small wage increases, so that's why I'm sure it was kind of developed the way it was. So I just wanted to thank you.
I'll go along with that and also say that it was very much a group effort, and I appreciate everyone who was involved in this. And this is an easy yes for me, and one of the reasons why is because the longevity stipend part of it doesn't stratify based on classified versus certified. It acknowledges that everyone in our school buildings and on our campuses plays a vital role in helping our schools function, whether you're a teacher, whether you're a playground monitor, you know, whatever it is, whatever your role is at our schools is equally important. And so I like the fact that it acknowledges that.
Yes, that is so true.
I would just like to say also that I'm glad that we're making this move right now. I just feel like this is a deserving gift to our teachers and staff, and with the high cost of living, high rents, high homes, I think that it's just a drop in the bucket. We'd like to do more in the future, but this is a great start. I'm just really in favor of this.
Yes?
Eric Haron?
Yes.
Lisa Romano?
Yes.
Colleen Ederman?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
6.2 Business Services, Resolution 2024-25-01, amended and borrowing request line of credit, Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, the Mojave County Treasurer has requested the governing board approve and sign a borrowing request to Wells Fargo Bank as directed by the Mojave County Treasurer's Office for a line of credit in the amount of $1 million. The district does not anticipate the need to borrow funds from Wells Fargo. However, the borrowing request must be put in place in case it becomes necessary. Also attached to the resolution is a resolution to the board for authorizing the borrowing request. Now, this is something that happens on an annual basis. You recall back in June-ish, I think it was, we typically bring these resolutions to you in bulk. Back in June, there was a change with this process at the Treasurer's Office where Wells Fargo wanted to align these lines of credit to the calendar year versus the fiscal year. No one knows why, but that's how Wells Fargo decided to restructure it. So with that, in June, when we came to the board with the resolution, we had an extension for the six months to get us to December 31st. This one actually starts now on the calendar year, so will go into effect on January 1st. So again, this is a housekeeping item, something that happens each year.
I move we accept 6.2 as presented.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Eric Haron?
Yes.
Lisa Romano?
Yes.
Colleen Ederman?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
6.3 Business Services, vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, approval of vouchers and auxiliary funds for November 2024, as well as year-to-date activity for K-12 student auxiliary funds. They're in front of you tonight for your motion and approval.
I move to approve 6.3.
I'll second.
Yes.
Eric Haron?
Yes.
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 7.1 Superintendent, does the superintendent have information for us this evening?
I do. I have a couple of things I would like to share. If Mike will help me. This is about our people who are meeting. So Eric always says that meetings are better with cookies. So we do have cookies for each of you. And also, and apparently there are some cookies over there for everyone to share before you leave.
I've been asking for these for four years.
He really has. It's a true story.
I'll take it. I'm happy.
And if you'd want to open that, you can share that. So we also have a plaque that you can take home that just thanks them for their service. As you heard Carol share, they have served John for eight years, Kyle and Eric for four. All of those things...
That Carol shared, you have gone through, all the things with COVID, all the things with technology. And our students now are one-to-one at the high school, and all of our other schools have a great deal of technology. Lots of CTE programs, just added fire science and then added the EMS program. Also, working with ASU to bring that STEM program to our kids and really offer it to them, that's been, we saw it grow very quickly, so we're going to work on how to keep them going in that direction. We know that is a sad moment, but we're going to keep working on what you've done for our kids. Our kids now have a guaranteed and viable curriculum that our teachers have in their hands, they can use. Teachers also have assessment platforms where they can figure out where are our kids right now and how do we move them forward. All of that is based on your votes to support those things that were put in front of you. The other thing I will say is you did just approve salary tonight, but you also moved teachers, when I got here, from a $34,000 base to a $44,000 base. We do look forward to working with both our returning members and our newly elected board members to see what can we do in that arena. But I just wanted to sincerely thank each one of you for, this is a volunteer job, but you show up and you do support each kid that's in the classroom and our teachers and our staff. So thank you from all of us for everything you've done during that time. I do want to share that our next board meeting is actually going to be moved to the second Thursday of the month, so it will be January 9th at 6:00 PM.
Do the governing board members have any information for us this evening?
I just wanted to do a quick thank you to the district, to the, to the directors. It's been a very, it's been my pleasure and my honor to work with you. I do think we've accomplished a lot. Two things today, you know, that came up in the STEM arena, the Minions, once again, did wonderful. One of our students got a full-ride scholarship to Davidson? I want to say Davidson University. Yeah, and, you know, and through the Questbridge Program, which we, I don't believe had anybody go through that for about 10 years. And, yeah, and that's a big, big deal. And so, we have a lot of momentum going on with curriculum and STEM, and hopefully that will continue. Once again, thank you to each and every one of you. It's been a pleasure.
I won't go through all of my reasons for, for being so grateful for the outgoing board members, but you have really meant a lot to me, and your service to the community has really meant a lot to me. So, thank you. And then, I also did want to say, I'm sure this will be met with more fanfare in the future, but I keep seeing social media posts about some of our people who have renewed their MBCT or have just become MBCTs recently. So, congratulations to them. I see, I know, I see. Congratulations to them.
I definitely say it's been an interesting four years. Just going through a lot of what was happening at the beginning with COVID, everything that we've accomplished, I think that we've definitely set a good precedent going forward. Glad to the people that are going to pick up the torch, and I am excited to see how they're going to run with it. So, thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate working with this group of people. It's been a unified board, and I really like that, that we've been able to just talk about issues and come to consensus and work well together. That's always a blessing. It's more fun that way. And then, also, I'd just like to say thank you to Eric Aran also because I wouldn't be on the board if he hadn't said, "Why don't you go out for school board?"
Don't blame me for that.
But he's, he's been a great example for me across the hall, and I've, I got interested in more school issues as a result of watching him in the school district, and I appreciate you a lot, too. Thank you. Well, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 All right, the meeting is adjourned. Have some cookies.